I'm Jody Shea, Chair of the School Board Finance Committee. Sean Baybine is also here, the Town Council Finance Committee Chair. I have Christine Massengill and Carrie Leifert who are on the School Board Finance Committee. Peter Hayes is here from the Town Council Finance Committee. It looks like Chris may be joining us later.
Right.
Also George Entwistle Superintendent and Kate Bolton, the Finance Director, as well as Tom Hall, Account Manager, and Porta. And Joanne Saismore, sorry, Joanne.
Can't miss her.
We'll go right into old business because we want to sort of get to our presentation. The status of our ongoing glossary development. We are very close, I was just saying, we're about five or six turns away. I won't point fingers, it's who I'm still waiting for. If you can get those to me in the next, you know, four or five days, that would be appreciated. And then I will combine it all, send it back out, and then I think maybe at our next meeting we can sort of go through and highlight any that we think need further discussion.
Now, I'm inclined to incorporate this in the budget document too, so to the extent it's helpful for us, the resident chief is helpful too, so we'll kind of incorporate the final draft.
Yep, I think that's great, and I think also putting it on the budget portal would be great. And then 3B, report out on the Budget Forum 2016 Planning. Who wants to sort of review what we've got?
I'll defer to them.
Yeah, generally, I think the group, and we checked in with the larger group last year, it's kind of a debrief, everyone felt as though the format worked fairly well, so we're not looking to change things up dramatically. We will be taking questions the day after the budget's presented, so we'll be ready for the budget portal to start taking questions on Thursday, April 7th, and we'll take them right up to the event. And the point of that exercise is really so we can make sure we understand the questions, make sure we can provide thorough and accurate answers at the time. And then, of course, we will be taking questions from the floor and doing our best to respond as we receive them. Kevin Freeman has graciously agreed to again moderate. And again, the format won't change much, questions will be directed through George and I depending on town or school subject matter, and to the extent we can't answer them, we'll draw upon our staffs who will be available in the front of the room. As I recall, that wasn't necessary all that often, but it's nice to have the comfort that they're there if we need them. So again, that's April 27th, Wednesday, 7:00 to 8:30 is our plan in the auditorium.
And then I think after, after that forum, we'll again post the questions, not only the ones that came to us before him, the answers, but also the ones that came up during that forum.
Yeah, in fact, by tomorrow, I'll have last year's posted as well, just sort of there. I suspect some of that territory will be familiar, I might as well put them up, some of it.
I think, I wanted to interrupt you, Tom, but I think Colette and I did stick them up there, but I'm not sure whether we did a save the date, I can't recall now whether we did a save the date, but we'll, we probably should get a little bit more of a banner up there. But I do recall that we were looking at it as she and I were trying to put things together up there.
So I did prepare kind of a to-do list, and I think George and I will probably be able to tackle most of it. One of the open questions, we need to put Jody or Sean on the spot, last year there was a, what was it, a letter the editor or a leader article that promoted the event, that might be a good idea, you two could collaborate on that and try to get it placed a couple of weeks in advance of the event.
I wrote it for you.
I appreciate that. Wow, just sign your name here.
I think all the other logistics are pretty much in place, so George and I will be able to take care of all of that.
I did it with Chris, and look where he is now.
Late at the end of the table.
Great, thank you, Tom. So, moving on to new business, I think I'll turn it over to George just to introduce our guests.
Yes, we do have guests, and they're from the Maine Education Policy Research Institute and at the University of Southern Maine. We have Amy Johnson, she's co-director of the institute, and Jim Sloan is research associate at the institute. They basically have done a brief study of school funding expenditure and academic performance in Scarborough, Maine, and comparable communities of York and Cumberland Counties, and they're here to do a presentation to the joint finance group in terms of their findings. So I don't know who's going to start off, Amy?
Okay, I'll just say a couple of words while we are passing out some of these handouts.
Yes, I'm Amy Johnson from the Maine Education Policy Research Institute. We're, the Maine Education Policy Research Institute is actually co-located at USM and the University of Maine. So at USM, we're affiliated with another entity called CPARE, the Center for Education Policy Applied Research and Evaluation. So we go by both titles, which gets confusing sometimes, but we are at the University of Southern Maine. So what Jim is passing out is some data that we've compiled and analyzed, and a process that Jim will talk us through, and just looking at some of the Scarborough expenditures. A little bit of background about our organization, MEPRI is the policy institute that works with the Maine Department of Education on an annual basis to look at the essential programs and services funding formula and the funding model. So we have extensive history with understanding how the system works in Maine, looking annually at expenditure data, so that was, I think, how we came up on the radar for our qualifications to do this work.
Go ahead, Jim.
Sure.
Jim has the floor.
Okay, well, if you'll open your reports, I think what we'll do is just sort of walk through the information in the report. As you can see on the table of contents, we did a study in really three phases. The first phase was where we were determining comparison group. So what we did is we were looking at the, and we'll go through it all, but we were, we need to find comparable communities in York and Cumberland Counties, and then as part of that also look at, looking at academic performance in those communities to try to find maybe which of those within the comparison group were doing well, their students were doing well, and might be good examples, sort of model, school administrative units. And then second phase of the study, we looked at education expenditures, the idea of investing in education, and the third phase, we were looking about, you know, who pays for it in terms of the state contribution, the state subsidy, as well as none of the local contributions. And now let's go through it in. If you will turn to the first table, it was on page three. What we have here is the list of all of the school administrative units in York and Cumberland Counties, and you can see, I'll just go across the columns. We were trying to find characteristics that were important to school funding, that we know that have some sort of relationship to funding. And so we looked at resident enrollment, because sometimes districts that are very different in size are not, are not similar, very small districts tend to have higher per pupil costs and so forth. So we wanted to find ones that were similar in size to Scarborough, as well as per pupil valuation, because the per pupil valuation, and this is the state equalized valuation of the town properties, so this is the property tax base, because the property tax base per pupil is an indication of how, of the town's resources in order to pay. And then the free and reduced lunch percent is a measure of poverty of the students and has to do with student needs. And so what we tried to find was districts that were similar in all these, or not too dissimilar in all of these. So you can tell, we have a similarity rating, if they're identical, it's 100 percent, and as they get further and further away in either direction, it goes down to, you know, 0 percent would be probably very not comparable. And if you look down the list, it's in order of the overall similarity, which was just an average of the three similarity ratings in those, in those. And to find schools that are dissimilar, if you look down the list, you might find some numbers in blue, those are numbers that are kind of very different, you can see, Bitterford, for example, has very high free reduced lunch percent in comparison to Scarborough, so they maybe aren't the most comparable district. And if you look, there are more and more blue numbers as you get further down the page. So, and I'll take questions at any time during, and I'll also have some time afterwards hopefully. But if you have, if you need any clarification, just let me know. So what we did to find a comparison group was we realized it was, it was all of the ones on here that don't have any blue numbers, that really none of the similarity ratings are below 40 percent. And so if you look on page four, you can see this is just sort of the same information, but it's done graphically.
Can I ask a question after we go?
Yeah.
So if I look at the overall similarity, if I read this correctly, it's telling me that they are all similar, while the subsets of whether it's free reduced lunch or per pupil, there are variances, but yet the overall group that's here, we're all, we're similar with Westbrook, Portland, Kettereef, and all of them, correct?
I think that's somewhat subjective as to what the percent means, I mean, what the, the overall similarity is the average, if you look at the similarities, so this is just an index, if you will, to try to sort it and see who was most similar coming up at the top line.
Yeah, and so overall, you can see, if you want to look at it, South Portland, Freeport, Kennybunk, the ones at the top of the list are sorted by the overall similarity, those are more similar to Scarborough than the ones at the bottom of the list.
I appreciate that, thank you.
And you said the cutoff was 40 percent or more, is what you determined as?
Yes.
I think we drew a line.
Well, yeah.
Go ahead.
Well, I mean, it's really a two-step process, we sort of drew a line at around 60 percent in the overall similarity, and we're working off that number, and then we realized that Bitterford had this number, free reduced lunch, that was very dissimilar, and so we decided that was not a comparison school, the school district. And then we looked at Gray, and even though Gray wasn't quite a 60 percent overall similarity, none of its numbers were below 40 percent, so we put that in, within, into the comparison group. And that is reflected on the following page, page four. Each district is, you know, each town or RSU is represented by a circle. The location of the circle on this, on this graph is based on free and reduced lunch percentage in the district and the per pupil valuation. So the ones with higher poverty rates are toward the right side of the graph, the ones with lower are on the left side of the graph. The ones that are higher up have very high per pupil valuations, the ones at the bottom have lower per pupil valuations. And the size of the circle represents the district size, enrollment size. And so you can see the comparison schools, Scarborough's of dark blue in the middle there, you can see the comparison schools in blue, and light gray are the schools that were not comparable. And you can see why they weren't comparable, if you look, the ones toward the right, the gray ones on the side, they just have much higher free and reduced lunch percentages, much higher poverty. The ones toward the top, Shreve, Guileman, and Wellsville-Gunford, they just had very high per pupil valuations, a lot of fiscal capacity. And then Dayton is also not on the list, just because it's very small. The next step that we took going on to page five.
It was Dayton.
It's in, if you look at Dayton, Dayton's in one of the blue circles.
Yeah, yeah, it's that they were overlapping.
Yeah.
It's on top of the forum.
Who's asking?
Yes. So on page five, now we started to look at the academic performance of all the schools in the comparison group. And for the rest of the report, we're not, we just, we're only looking at the comparison schools, the schools that were in blue. And in fact, one of those comparison schools that's not on there is the Saco, because they were in RSU 23, and so for most of the data that we have in comparing to the past, it wasn't available, so we left them out of the report. So this, you can see, we have the proficiency percentages in 2013, 14, in reading and math in, on the state assessment, the ECAP, and the Maine High School, MHSA, Maine High School Grades five and eight, and grade 11. And then I made an overall average score at the end, and this is sorted, this list is sorted by the overall average of the six subjects and grade levels that we looked at. So you'll see, and then Scarborough's at the top of the list, just so that you can see Scarborough clearly. But you can see all the ones with an overall proficiency percentage above Scarborough or above that bold line, and Falmouth, Cape Elizabeth, Yarmouth, York, and RSU 51. That was what we started referring to as an aspirational comparison group, because those might be good schools to look at in terms of schools that are doing a very good job in terms of their proficiency of their students. And then the group of, you know, Kennybunk, you know, the RSU 21, RSU 35, and RSU 5, those had, were fairly comparable, a little below how well Scarborough was doing with their students, but fairly comparable, and then, and then the rest is below the line. And then at the bottom of the table, as most of the tables after this, in the, in the report, we'll have these, we'll have like a minimum, the lowest and the highest, and the mean of the different groups, the one, the comparison would be of all of them, including Scarborough and everybody else. And then the aspirational comparison group, when we look at that, we're just looking at the lowest and the highest, and the mean of those, just of those top five school districts nonetheless.
Any questions so far, if anyone's following this?
So the bottom of the page, the aspirational group, comparison group? So we're at 77 percent, that's the overall percentage.
Yes.
The mean of that group is 83, am I reading that right?
Yes, you're reading that right.
So again, that aspirational group is just the five top districts, the ones that have higher, and then, and that will be the group that we're calling the aspirational group from here on out into subsequent tables.
So, so if I can ask, from an interpretation perspective, we are doing better than the mean, excuse me, we are not performing to the aspirational group?
Yes.
But we are performing better than the comparison group?
Better than the mean of the whole comparison group.
Yes.
Yes, yeah. And then, and just based on our methodology, you, they aren't going to be doing better than the comparison, than the aspirational group, because we define the aspirational group as those that were, whose students were scoring higher.
Okay. So I just want to be clear also, this aspirational group is solely based on performance, educational performance, has nothing to do with the economic side of things, with the cost side of things.
Right, so the whole comparison group, we chose it based on the first couple of slides as being similar in ability to pay.
Demographics, yeah, okay. And this is purely academic performance?
Purely academic performance. And then, and then the rest of the report, what we'll be doing is we will be comparing things like the financing and the funding of the comparison group and of the aspirational comparison.
If you look at grade 11, the scores really drop off for Scarborough compared to the aspirational group, is that, is there any, are those just raw scores and it is what it is, or is there any?
Well, it's, that is interesting, and I did, and I did notice that going through them, that if you do notice that for the grade, especially in reading, grade five and grade eight, really Scarborough's scores are within the range of the aspirational group.
It's grade 11 that drops off.
Grade 11 it does drop off.
So as they age, they get?
Is that a whole?
Well, it's as, it's as the, as history has dictated here at Scarborough, the least amount of investment has been made at the high school level. I think when we do our own little statistical comparison and take a look at the top performing high schools, of which the aspirational group is part, but there's also a few others in other parts of the state, if you look at the other nine of the top 10, or the other 10 of the top 11, including Scarborough, on average, just as one indicator of resources at the high school is the student teacher ratio. And the student teacher ratio of the others, the average, if we were just at that average, we would have between 16 and 18 more full-time equivalent faculty members at our high school. So that gives you some sense as to what the high school is doing and the handicap that they have in terms of the resources that are missing.
I just think that's a good, it's, it's a numbered interpretation of what we know the performance of the high school has been from, I mean, you know, there's, it's, it's real data, it's not, it's not subjective, it's objective, because it's based on test scores. So it's, it's, the important thing for me would be it's more of a tangible measurement versus a, we think this is happening or we feel this is happening kind of thing.
And this phenomenon is equal, I mean, happens in reading and math.
Correct.
Correct.
And it seems to-
Not as pronounced in math.
Yeah, it seems that it's a statewide problem, not just a Scarborough problem.
I don't think so.
Not for the aspirational group.
I think it's a Scarborough problem. The aspirational group holds the role.
Because it's-
Same for the peer?
Yeah.
Yep.
Do I drop off some of the support?
George, on that student teacher ratio, is that, is that true below the high school level as well? Do we have similar differences?
The easiest data to just pull out is really what's, what's collected in terms of the rankings for high schools. So it gets, it gets a lot more mushy at the lower levels, because somebody might be an instructional strategist and somebody else might be something else, and so in terms of how many teachers, I mean, you can do it. I think that without looking at quantitative indicators, I think that we are more comparable at those other grade levels. I think the easiest place to look is at the high school, which has really not changed in a long time, has had a traditional schedule since 1990, which basically has locked in not only the resources, but allows no other opportunities. So it's basically, we have created a static condition of resources to what's offered at the high school, and it's been locked in there since 1990. Anyway, I, it's, I think it's a dramatic indicator, and as Chris said, it's a quantitative indicator, you can run the numbers yourself on the top 10, or maybe even start looking at a broader group, but when they identify the top 10 performers in terms of high schools in Maine, one of the things that you look at is, well, how, how much do they have in terms of resources? And, and it's a pretty, it's a pretty clear and clean apples-to-apples indicator to say that we are minus, I would say, minus 18 full-time equivalent, just to be at the same average as the others.
So I guess my question for you guys would be, how, how difficult or easy, I guess to maybe to some staff as well, how difficult or easy would it be to track this on a, on an annual basis? Is all the other test data for the other districts available through the DOE, or is it?
Yes.
It is.
This was all publicly available data, and in fact, this, the test scores in particular are usually, you can find without too much difficulty on both the Maine Data Warehouse and the Department of Education.
Okay. So should we choose to use this as a metric to measure, it's easily updatable, and it's, it's easy to adapt from year to year, or whatever span we choose?
Yeah, in fact, on the, on the warehouse itself, you can actually download a spreadsheet that would give you the whole state, you don't even have to go school by school and pick it out.
Okay, thank you.
And remember, you're looking at percentages from 13, 14, and, and then we've had some difficulty in terms of comparative data that would be available to us.
That's true.
Because of the state, but, you know, I'm gonna, I'm going to guess, were I to ask to make a guess, I would say that it's probably not quite as dramatic a change if we were to look and had comparative data, but we would still, we would still show a lag as we hit high school. We would show a, a bit of a precipitous drop from the performance K8.
So the next phase was looking at the education expenditures, and I, and we were looking at two points in time, we were looking at the 2011, 2012 fiscal year, and then we're going to move forward to the most recent fiscal year where we have comparable data for everybody, and that's the 2014, 15. But, so on page six, you have the education spending in 2012, and one thing that kind of jumps out is that the overall Scarborough was on a, was very, very much toward the bottom in terms of spending, very low spending on a per pupil basis in the total. Another, if you look at the spending in instruction, that was fairly low, it was in the, you know, it was below the mean of the entire group, and certainly below the, even the lowest of the aspirational group. Some of the other items of note, as you move across, I thought the student and staff support was pretty low, looked very low in comparison to the other districts. System administration and school administration were both low, the school administration even the lowest of all the groups, of all of those, of all of the comparison districts. And, you know, you can see that debt service was a little bit on the high side. But then, what I did, from what we did for page seven, we looked at the changes that were made in, in spending in all of the districts, so this is what it changed.
This is a question on debt service, I'm just curious, for those projects that receive state funding, are they reported there as well, or is that locally funded?
Sorry, this is local only, debt service. Yeah. So if it, so for example, if the, if it was a state-approved school and state-funded school construction project, that would not occur on here.
So Whitworth would be in this number or not?
Yes, in.
It would be.
At this point, it would have been?
Not in 12, no.
Right, so it's not?
No.
It's not, I mean, it would be in that number, but it's not in this analysis.
So, I, just a quick question, I think it occurred to me, using the normal reporting, I don't think Yarmouth includes their debt payments in their educational spending. How did you accommodate for different towns reporting differently?
You mean that they would do, in the town?
I think, I, my understanding is they incorporate that into their overall debt structure, remove that from the top, the school funding portion of it, so how would you differentiate? I, I, I don't know if that's entirely accurate, but that was kind of my interpretation, looking through their spreadsheets.
In, in this report, it doesn't. So this report is merely what is reported to the Department of Education, State Department of Education, and then the department reports out, and these reports, this is all publicly available, from the Department of Education.
That's a local way that they do reporting.
It must, if you look at their number, they're not so far in the wack, they're comparable to the aspirational group.
They don't have a lot of latitude in how they're allowed to report their expenditures to the state, there is a sort of a standard chart of accounts they have to use for that.
Right.
I mean, there may be areas where they have data collection issues, but by and large, it's, it's been in place for long enough.
Okay. And I have to say that, I do want to say that the financial data that is reported out by the state, you know, has improved over the years with the new, with the, not new anymore, but the, even going back before the MEDAM system was put in, and they had an old chart of accounts, and there were these differences in the accounting, the local accounting, and that, that was much more reflected in the data before, so the data has much improved over what it's been in prior years. It's pretty comparable.
So it is fair to say that this is really a true kind of apples-to-apples, a lot of times, there's not a whole lot of interpretation of what columns go where, this is DOE reported, how they report it, hard numbers.
Yes, that, that's for the most part, I mean, some, in some cases, there's, for example, school administration and system administration, if you have certain tasks that are done by a principal in one place and done by an assistant superintendent in another, that it's supposed to be- to be reported based on the function that they're, but a lot of times, it does get reported based on the person that's doing the job. And so there are, there are things like that. So one caveat is, if you're looking at system or school administration, you should probably look at both, because those are examples where you might have some of the functions in one district reported in one and in the other.
Just a real good question. Have you, and maybe it's further, if I haven't looked ahead, but have you guys ever done any sort of a coefficient relationship between, is there, is there a statistically valid relationship between expenditures per pupil and actual academic performance? I've read things that say there is, I've read things that say not so much. Is that in here? Is there anything that you've done to look at this expenditure by the peer group or the...
It's definitely not in here. Yeah.
That's a big debate in, in, in the academic literature.
Yeah, I mean, I've read both sides of the equation, it seems to be...
Where I stand on it is, if you, if you simply are looking at more money, differential effects of more money, just generically speaking, often you will not find any systematic differences. You'll find systematic differences because maybe rich schools spend more and maybe their schools do better. But once you correct for this, this, the students, once you equalize the student populations, differential spending in itself alone, there is not a lot of explanatory power. However, I would add to that, that there are some things that you can do that cost money that, that can make a difference. And so I believe, in my opinion, money, in my judgment, money that is spent well, additional money can make a difference. But sometimes money is not spent well.
Right. So has there been any work, have you guys done any work, are going to do any work on, and I think I agree with you, it's how you spend the money? But have you guys done some analysis that shows what those things are that you spend money on? Is it, is it, as we had talked about, is it teacher size, is it, I mean, classroom size? So that'd be really helpful at some point, if you have that data, to say where, if you have money, where should it go to get the biggest bang?
One of the things that we did was, our, our center has done a, a fair amount of work on what we've identified as high-performing schools. And so this is a way of looking at all the schools in the state and basically saying, who, who could we find that are schools that are quote-unquote beating the odds? It's a line of research that's been done nationally, and we replicated it here in Maine with some support from the Maine legislature, so our taxpayer dollars at work. We had a two-year study where we sent out teams of researchers into the field to conduct case studies and actually look at some of these schools that were popping out in the data as being, spending their money well, efficient, not, not spending four times above the state average, but getting more bang for their buck in terms of getting good outcomes for their investment. And so we went and then conducted case studies to say, what are the things that matter? Then we have a whole series of reports on our website, and it's probably well out of the scope of today's conversation to get too much into that. But absolutely, there are certain investments that matter, there are certain investments that don't, and that might be something we could come back and talk about at a future time, if you'd like. We could bring some of the researchers who participated in those case studies, if that's of interest.
I also want to caution us, though, that's more of a school board function than a town council function. While I think it's good to ask those questions, I, I don't think it's within our purview as council members to say we should invest in X or Y. I, I mean, I think we can have those discussions, but ultimately, that's, I think that's the board's prerogative to decide where they think the investments should be best applied. I'm not saying that we don't ask those questions, so that's part of our discussion to determine if the funding's correct, but I'd be very hesitant to look at one investment program versus another investment program from, from what the board's presenting to us.
And I think what, I think what is indisputable is the correlation between the quality of who is in the classroom and what they are doing in the classroom and student outcomes.
The one thing I was gonna say is, there was no easy answer about, the one thing that matters is class size, or the one thing, there were no easy black and white. It was things like setting high expectations, teacher quality, how time is spent, how efficiently time is spent, good leadership, things that don't actually... Culture, yeah. Use of time.
And I think our, from our, again, from our purview and perspective, I think we can ask what kind of outcomes we're going to expect and what kind of improvements we're going to expect for the investments that we're going to be making. That would be, to be, to me, that would be a, an easier conversation for us to have if we're gonna choose this parameter of high school math equivalency scores, what kind of improvement can we expect if we make this kind of investment? Rather than saying, you know, maybe we should look at investing in more teachers or investing in, you know what I mean? I, I think we can, that's how we would, that's how I think we would, as a council, would manage the department and say, okay, show us your performance, show us where the, where the improvements are gonna be. If that makes sense.
To turn to page seven, additional spending in all the districts was higher in twenty fifteen than in twenty twelve, and this one is simply the additional money that was spent, the change, the change in education expenditure by category. And wanted to point out, in the case of Scarborough, if you look across the top, that the bulk of the money, the largest portion of it, was certainly instruction, and the largest portion was regular instruction. And going across, looking, additional amounts were added to system administration and school administration and others. Debt service was a fairly large increase if you look at comparing to other districts. Some districts, it looks like Falmouth, you know, must have had a construction project. You can sort of tell those things.
So Whitworth would be in this number?
If it picks up through two thousand fourteen, fifteen.
Yep.
So, again, from an interpretation standpoint, this, is it safe to say that this means Scarborough is making more investments in education from two thousand twelve to two thousand fifteen than the other districts? Because that's why our number is twenty-eight, nine. So we are making more investments recently.
Right. Yeah, that, so again, page six was sort of showing some fairly low per pupil spending in comparison to the comparison group, and this shows, this is the change on this slide, which is the, the amount that's been added since two thousand twenty twelve.
The amount that's been added is, is larger than...
Yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty significant.
Yeah.
The aspirational group, the mean, was eighteen hundred, and we spent twenty-nine hundred, so it's, well, two-point-nine.
Yeah, remember, they started higher.
Right.
So, but we're adding more, and, and, you know, we'll see in the next, hey, people see how they're sort of catching up to, to the middle, moving towards the front.
And I think the important thing to mention, too, though, is remember, their, their, their performance outcomes are better as well. So I think we're, we're, while I'm not, I want to be careful we don't just correlate we're, we're spending more money, so we're doing okay. I think ultimately, the goal is the performance measurements, the outcome, the student outcomes.
It's also where you're spending it, right?
Well, right, well, that's, that's the other discussion, of course.
That's the conversation.
And I think this previous slide shows that these aspirational comparison groups have been investing over time.
Right.
Whereas, on that previous slide, it shows that Scarborough, frankly, hadn't.
Right.
And so to then come to this two thousand fourteen, fifteen, it shows that Scarborough finally got on board and said, hey, it is important for us to invest. Meanwhile, these ones have already been investing all along and don't need the, the push to...
Right. I just want to make sure we're focusing on the ultimate goal is, is not necessarily, I mean, the, the investment piece is important, but the ultimate goal is the performance-based side of it. And I, I want to make sure we don't get sidetracked with, well, we're investing a lot of extra money now in education, we should be okay. I, I don't, I don't want that conclusion to, I, I don't saw that, draw that conclusion. Yes, we've invested more over that gap, but we had a, I think to your point, we had a bigger gap to make up.
And the other, the other piece is, just, you know, just from the way that systems, particularly school systems, work, is investments are made, they don't necessarily create a reaction at the end of that school year. The investments, you know, I'm pleased to see this because I think what the team, my team and I have continued to say is, where we have made investments, there have been changes. And I think that, I've peeked ahead here, and I think that there's something in here that might speak to that as well.
Yes. But it's...
You would blame me for not being a little ahead of you all?
Do you eat your dessert first, George?
What?
Do you eat your dessert first?
Life is short.
Never was left to...
If we can stay on the...
One last point on Friday.
For just a little bit, and I just, I want to really look at, again, look at regular instruction, and special ed instruction is, is important, too. It's, it's often, it's less up to decisions, it's more required sometimes. But the regular instruction, you can see it's still below the aspirational group, but it's more around the mean of the total group. System administration and school administration are ones that a lot of people are very concerned about, about not overspending in those. And if you look, it does not look like Scarborough was overspending in the fiscal year fifteen, but again, school administration was the lowest of the group, still the lowest, even though they had to put some investment in there. System administration is on the low side. And then we can, I think we can, and then the total spending, you look at that as well, and it's still below the aspirational group in terms of the, you know, the ones that are performing well academically, and then, but more toward the mean of the comparison group. And then we can look, one of the things was, if you're thinking about it as an investment, this might be some idea of some early returns. And obviously, education is a long process of, you know, thirteen years or so you're putting into each student. But, so a two-year change in proficiency rates is what we're looking at on page nine. It's not a perfect measure and, but it's just one indication of that things might be going well. And that, if you look at Scarborough's overall change, you know, it's a two percent increase. And compared to the comparison group, you know, that's, that's really good. So it's a, it's a good indication. Again, it's just one, one year, one difference, one, two-year difference, one point, one point in time, from six different subjects in the grade span, so that helps, but it's still one point in time, but it's, it's an indicator.
I know York's doing grade five.
Well, yes, I noticed that one. It's fairly small number of students there, and, you know, it went from maybe seven to nineteen more.
This page definitely does need a standard disclaimer about, about the, we're comparing two different cohorts of data. We don't want to go on record as saying that increased investment caused your two percent. We need to be a little bit more tentative about this data we're dealing with, a two-year gap in time. But this is just one of those things you want to look at to see if things are trending in the right direction, and it looks like things are trending in the right direction for Scarborough. I love this slide.
There were some twigs that moved in there. They left Scarborough.
Okay. We're ready to move on to phase three. Now, now how do you pay for all of that? So that's, okay. State and local contributions to education funding. And what this first slide is here, it's really just a, kind of a listing of characteristics that show things that might affect the, the resource needs of the students as well as the ability to pay of the community. If you look at the free and reduced lunch percentages, you can see that Scarborough is right toward the bottom of the aspirational group, but is, you know, sort of rather the top, you know, a little, a little more poverty than most of the aspirational group, but lower poverty than most of the other schools. The regional salary index is, is the, it's the adjustment that they, that the state uses in determining what salaries should cost in a district based on economic data, based on local data, labor market areas, the salaries of other districts in labor, in the labor markets. And so you can see, most of them are the same because they're in the same labor market or nearby labor markets. But it's an indication of some districts, because of competition, do need to pay their teachers more than other districts. And then the, the per pupil EPS model amount, that's, that's the number off the two seventy-nine, as they say, that they're using, that the state determines how much total money, local and state money, it should cost to meet the main learning results. And a lot goes into that number, the regional salary index goes into that number, there's a weighted pupil counts for the number of students on, eligible for free and reduced lunch. There's a whole special ed model that goes into it, depending on the, the number and severity of special ed disability students. And it's sort of an overall measure of district needs based on the student needs and based on the resource prices and, and so forth. Then, on the right side of the line, you see median household income and per pupil valuation. And those are on there to show fiscal capacity. Of course, the per pupil valuation is a good indicator of the tax base and, and how well you can use the tax base to get extra money for education in terms of providing resources on a per pupil basis. But the median household income is in there because, of course, people have to pay their taxes out of their income, that you can have communities that have high property wealth with lower incomes and, or vice versa. And so both are very important. And you can see where Scarborough falls in terms of median household income, generally below most of the aspirational group, but a little, a little above, about, right, about at the mean of the whole group. And in terms of per pupil valuation, they're also, in this case, they are kind of in the middle, but also in the middle of the aspirational group, in terms of the aspirational group does not necessarily have higher per pupil valuations. And one thing to remember is this does include commercial property, it could include second homes and things like that. It's not just residential property in the, in the valuation, and that's why some districts have a different valuation than some people might expect when they first look at it.
I'm sorry, could you just, help me understand this regional salary index again? So the lower the number, the, the more, the less costly your labor is?
Yes.
Okay.
And therefore, the lower the, the amount in the EPS formula that the state would say you need to raise for your minimum budget.
Just a good question. I mean, if you take a look at the aspirational group and you look at the EPS model and what it says it should cost, and then you go back to page eight, where all the aspirational groups are spending significantly more than the model, is there a problem with the model?
Well, no. What happens in the, with the model is, with, with the EPS model, so that amount, the EPS total amount, what the state then does is they determine the local ability to pay. And that local ability to pay becomes the local required share. That's color.
That's the problem with the formula, they determine what your ability to pay is.
And that's why the, it bumps it up, that's why the total expenditure bump up.
Exactly. And what, and so what happens is then, the rest of it, that's not the local required share, is the state subsidy. Now, on top of all of that, on top of the EPS model, there can be a local optional expenditure. So the locals can raise more bills than the state requires, and, in fact, they do, and therefore spend more money than the EPS. And the EPS model amount is supposed to be the amount to meet the learning results. And it doesn't include much in the way of, for example, extracurriculars. It includes co-curriculars, but not so much in the way of extracurriculars and some other items that might be in a comprehensive program that districts will want to have.
Are you aware of any districts that are only funding to the EPS level?
There are a handful. The one that makes the news most often is Lewiston. And it's something I think that's an annual struggle for some districts. You guys may relate to the, sometimes the challenge of getting a budget passed by taxpayers. But one, one of the things that I think is perhaps not widely discussed is the flag, back in the initial days when the EPS formula was being developed, it was widely discussed as being a floor and not a ceiling, and this is the minimum we want you to raise. And a lot of that has been sort of lost along the way, and I think a lot of communities see it as the maximum budget. It was never intended to be the maximum budget, it was intended to be the minimum that you must raise to at least get a comprehensive education, a comprehensive curriculum into schools. It doesn't, for example, even account for perhaps wanting AP courses. AP courses would be something that they would say is on-the-top gravy, and I think many communities would not necessarily see that as optional, they would see that as something core to what they do. So all those kind of things that communities might want to bring in to even enrich the curriculum further would be things that they would spend out of their own. curriculum further would be things that they would spend out of their own additional.
Actually, Chrissy.
I would add too, the, I'm sorry, the fewer, the fewer and fewer districts are spending below, at or below the required amount.
Yeah, actually, Chrissy, if you just look at page 10 and page eight, a lot of those schools that are in the comparison group, but in the lower tiers, Gore and Brunswick, if you look at their EPS and then you look at what they're actually spending, it's more closely aligned than the exceptional group. So there's some that are pretty, you know, pretty well matched. Others are not, but just interesting.
And we have a little bit of analysis further on the slides, and talk a little bit about that optional cost spending.
The state contribution. And here's, and this is-
This is actually, this is our slide.
Yeah, this is the slide. So we have, and we have in terms of the total expenditure as a percentage of EPS amount, I want to talk about that a little bit. So you can see that Scarborough, the amount was 106% in 2012 and 123% in 2015. But what that percentage is, is the percentage of the essential programs and services. So you can see they were 6% above essential programs and services in 2012, and which, compared to all the other groups, was, was, was very low. Not the lowest, but certainly well below anyone in the aspirational group, and below the, well below the mean of the entire comparison group. And you can see that two of the districts were actually slightly below EPS. But in 2015, all groups are above EPS in the comparison group. And Scarborough seems to be about at the mean of the comparison group, and almost up to the lowest of the aspirational comparison group. And so part of what goes, you know, to funding that is the state subsidy as a percentage of essential programs and services. And one of the things that's notable in that is you can see that it has gone down from 2012 to 2015, whereas most of the other groups, it's gone up, the percentage, it has gone up. But you can tell that with Scarborough, it has gone down a bit. And to explain maybe why that might happen, put the last two columns on here, which is the change in valuation, because valuation is what the state uses to determine a local ability to pay. And the change in enrollment, because the EPS amount is very much dependent on enrollment because most of the spending is on a per pupil basis, or the teacher, recommended teacher ratios are based on student enrollment and many other per pupil amounts. So you can see that the valuation went down, but not by as much as most of the other districts.
What's the source of, on the change in valuation, that seems questionable, only, I don't believe I've ever seen our valuation in our budget ever go down.
Well, what, what happened here, this is, now, these are based on the valuation that's used for the funding year in 2012 and 2015, and so it's a, there's a lag, so that, there's a lag of a few years. So really, the 2012 funding, valuation used in the 2012 funding year is, is an average of valuations through 2009. And what happened from 2009 to around 2012 was a decrease in some.
Yeah, that makes, that makes sense.
This is also the statewide equalized evaluation, which may be different than what you might see on your bill.
So, so one of the things that I think is challenging for us at Scarborough is to try and figure out which factors are the biggest ones, because even looking at your aspirational group here, we continue to seem to be on the lower end of the receiving pool. Would you say that pupil, per pupil, or, or, excuse me, change in enrollment is a larger factor determining that versus change of valuation, or is it really difficult to determine that based on the complexity of the formula?
It is hard to determine because the valuations are changing all over the state. And so it's your change in valuation relative to how everybody else is changing. But change of enrollment is a little, it's a little easier because it's more of a proportional thing in terms of the state funding.
Is that even realistic to ask the question? It's interesting to know, but what does that mean, we're going to recruit kids?
Yeah, no, no, no. What I'm, what I'm trying-
What can we do about it?
No, what I'm trying to determine is, is obviously people are asking questions of why does our state funding keep getting cut? And the responses that we keep getting is, well, it's our, it's our valuation, or yes, it's our student count, or yes, it's a combination of all those things. I just want to make sure that we have a clear understanding, because as you know, no matter, it depends on who you ask and how you ask that question. So it wasn't necessarily a rhetorical question, it was to try and understand if there is a, a better explanation as to why our funding continues to be cut, more so than the aspirational group. What are we doing differently or, or better or worse than those other towns are doing that's causing us to have an improper, or inappropriate, disproportionate reduction in our-
It's important to understand to help explain.
Correct.
I'm just not sure if we can affect those.
No, no, I'm not saying that. I, it's more of an explanation standpoint, because what I, what I want to avoid is having somebody say, well, it's just a matter of, of, if it's enrollment, then, you know, do we start building, try and tie that into, are we building the right developments in town, or something along those lines?
Let's be simple.
Right, right.
It appears as though, if you just sort of look at it anecdotal, anecdotally, that if you have a decrease in your student population, that's one strike against you. If you have an increase in valuation, that's another strike against you. But if you have both, that's four strikes against you.
Exponentially.
One strike is four.
Or maybe three strikes.
Yeah. Or that's the way the formula appears to work.
I know it's a lot more complex than that, but it's just trying to find a simple boiled down explanation as to why we seem to continue to be the biggest reducer across the state on a regular basis.
Seems like that we need to reduce the increase in our valuation and increase the number of students in our school.
But it's also, you know, people-
I'm serious, look at the numbers.
People talk a lot about the drop in enrollment, and you look at it from one year, and all this. A drop of 60 kids in a year doesn't affect how the school department does business. It just doesn't. It's, it's one kid in one kindergarten class at Blue Point School. It's one kid at Pleasant Hill, and for, there's, it's pockets of things. It's not like, oh, well, we have 60 less kids, if there's 14 students per teacher, we can get rid of four teachers. It just, it doesn't work that way. They're not products. It's scattered among six schools and 12 grades.
If anything, the data says that it's a pattern of behavior, that it takes time to impact the numbers. Right?
But I also-
Like you said, it's not, it's not one year to, one year to the next year, it's about three-year averages and three-year patterns that go into that.
More importantly, it's relative, though. Right? Because if we're, I mean, everybody seems to be experiencing some kind of enrollment reduction across the state. If you just look at total numbers from one year to the next statewide, it's down. So, so if it's proportion, if it's proportional, if it's a proportional evaluation, it's, you know, we're not going, to Tom's point, it's not like we're going to be able to bring more kids in. It's a question of, are we losing students at a much more rapid rate than another town is? And are we gaining valuation or maintaining, what we were told was, you're maintaining valuation, which is better than losing it, which is what most communities are doing. So that's a relative term. It's not like we're getting penalized for improving, we're just getting penalized compared to everybody else. And that's, that's, to me, that's, that's the intangible. That's hard, that's a hard thing to predict and a hard thing to plan for, because you just don't know without doing some very detailed analysis on a day, on a yearly basis, where we're going to end up from year to year. So that, and that then gets us to our argument of how quickly, or do we want to get to minimal receivership? And how quickly do we want to do that? Because that takes that volatility out of our planning and our budget.
And we're so close. It's really, it's really one and a half steps away.
Final slide really is, in my mind, is one of the biggest differences between Scarborough and state, local mill rate, because our value is so much greater than others. And the value of mill to us is two and three and four times.
Crazy.
Yep, right.
Yeah, and so if you look at, yeah, slide 12. So you can see, one of the things that is on the local required contribution, you can tell that for most, it's the same, that's the statewide required mill rate. For others, York, for example, and I don't know if you noticed on a slide, a few slides back, that York has a very high valuation per pupil, and that's why they're a minimum receiver, which means they don't have to raise up to the required mill rate in order to fully fund their schools. So that's why their required rate is lower than the, than the state required mill rate. And then, but then, yeah, on the local option, additional mills raised, you can see that, you know, York does, does do a high amount, all of the aspirational schools did a pretty high amount, even back in 2012. And Scarborough was on the low side, and Scarborough in 2015 was not as, not as low, they were still in the bottom, you know, they were still below the mean of the entire group, and certainly would be toward the bottom of the aspirational group as well. But this is where, you know, Scarborough was, you know, the most recent comparison year, in terms of the tax effort toward education.
Is York the only minimum receiver in the state, or are there others?
There's a number.
Handful, more than a handful?
Oh, I think it's more than a handful.
I'd say 50. So dealing with SAUs, if we count the ones who are receiving 30% of their special ed costs, because that's higher than what it would be, then there's, there's a, it's a good handful. And again, that's, that's dealing with, you could have, and Ellie, there's about, there's over 200 LEAs, because even though we don't really think of that many districts, some of those LEAs don't even operate schools. So in that number, especially dealing with some of these very small communities that don't even operate schools and they tuition out, we have quite a number of minimum receivers.
Yeah, maybe a rural district that has a lot of, a lot of property, not many students, and they just send the tuition. And that's definitely a case where you have a minimum receiver, but it's not somebody that you would have heard of, or it's not somebody that you say, oh, they're a very rich district. But there are minimum receivers all over the state.
But both in our comparison group, there's only one comparison in.
It's like Creport, anybody in 2015 that's under 8.1 is a minimum receiver.
Yeah. There's, there can be some very strange things with the RSUs, in that you can have certain towns inside that are minimum receivers. It gets very complicated.
So Raymond might be a minimum receiver where Wyndham is not, and overall, the RSU comes-
Yeah, there were some other, some other things with the RSUs. Generally, that's what it is.
Was there a significant or noticeable impact on EPS formula from charter schools now that they've, they're taking it out of the whole pie upfront instead of, because they have no valuation? They're getting the full pupil reimbursement rate, correct?
In terms of impact on EPS, what it, what I think that did is, so, so everybody's EPS gets calculated, and there's this big dollar sign that says, this is EPS for the whole state. And then the state says, we're going to fund X percent of that, and they, that dollar amount gets set. And then the charter schools come off the top of that, and their rest comes out in subsidy. And so this, so here's, here's EPS, here's-
Funding.
Funding that's going to happen, that determines the mill rate. If these charter schools weren't here and they were coming down here out of tuition, the mill rate might have been down a little bit, right? So it, this, the, the mill rate gets set at a point where it has to account for all those charter schools being in that state share percentage.
But their mill rate, how do you calculate their mill rate if they don't have that asset? You know, they don't-
Right, they don't have it, right, exactly. So they're coming off the top of that state share percentage, and therefore, the, the amount that's left to go to the other district, it's not, it's not affecting EPS.
Right.
What's affecting is the amount of state, right, the amount of state aid that's available after that mill rate has been established.
Okay. So do you, can you, I mean, just roughly, is that 2%, 3%? Is there, is it a significant amount? Is it something that's really not measurable, or?
The total, that's a good question. I mean, off the top of my head, I want to throw out, it's like 10 million, but that's completely off the top of my head.
14 total, out of EPS budget of?
Over, total EPS is around 2 billion.
2 billion with a B.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's really not even on the, it's not yet.
That was in fact why they did that, was to try to, just to beat that across all districts.
Even it out.
But again, just to, just to take that analogy a little bit further, so once the state sets that mill rate, the amount of money that Scarborough has to raise is determined by that mill rate. Before you even have a single kid enrolling in school, it's not at all proportional, it says you must raise this amount. And then for every kid that you add on, the EPS formula grows. And so you're somewhere up here. And so when you were talking before about what's affecting everything, you're, when your valuation changes relative to other people, that, that changes how much this bar hurts you on the mill rate. When your enrollment drops, that, the amount that you're above, your EPS is above how much you have to raise, for every dollar that, that comes out, that's coming dollar for dollar out of your state subsidy. Does that make sense? It's not proportional. Like, when we look at this 14%, you don't lose 14% of those kids. For every dollar out of EPS that you come down, until you are right here as a, as a minimum receiver with your, that amount raised being your mill rate, that's all coming straight out of your subsidy. And that is where I think you're at, where you're seeing this sort of pain in the subsidy that's dropping, is it is impacted by your valuation and the enrollments for both.
This is fascinating. Does anyone else have any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Well done.
Jim and Amy will actually be putting together a little bit more narrative on this-
Yeah, we can do a brief narrative, sort of touching on some of these highlights.
To be able to point out some of the interesting factors. And once that's completed, then I think that it can be, certainly, it will be part of, probably part of the, an exhibit to the budget, perhaps. I know it will certainly be on the website for the schools, so it would be accessible to people. If anybody's listening, trying to figure out what we're talking about, it's very difficult without seeing the charts here.
Yeah, right. And again, that, that narrative that we'll be adding in is the narrative that we just gave you, that we'll be caught by.
And I would suspect that for the board, that the institute would be a good resource in terms of going forward with this as a basis, and then really looking at the kinds of, of changes that are happening, both in terms of spending and in terms of student outcomes. And it's been a pleasure really working with these folks. They've done a great job.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So why don't we take a two-minute break? We'll let people group and-
Yeah, before you, I'm just going to distribute a piece that I'm going to speak to after, and if you want to take a few minutes just to maybe review it before we get going, just help on understanding. We'll let people...
Yeah, before you, I'm just going to distribute a piece that I'm going to speak to after. If you want to take a few minutes just to maybe review it before we get going, just help on understanding.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So why don't we take a two-minute break? We'll let people...
Yeah, before you, I'm just going to distribute a piece that I'm going to speak to after. If you want to take a few minutes just to maybe review it before we get going, just help on understanding.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So why don't we take a two-minute break? We'll let people...
Yeah, before you, I'm just going to distribute a piece that I'm going to speak to after. If you want to take a few minutes just to maybe review it before we get going, just help on understanding.
Thank you.
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 To help step it down easier over time. So that's, in a nutshell, basically what I'll be representing in the budget. And I don't know, staff, does anything to add further?
I think you did a good, provided a good explanation, Tom.
So in terms of how we use that going forward, I think that's a fascinating conversation, but we really need to know what the landscape is in terms of what the next annual budget needs for education and where we fit into that, what our valuation, our student population, all those things will be better known, you know, at the time. The, the good news is we'll have some flexibility and some money to, to fall back to or to put into play to help transition down.
Personally, I think this is a Band-Aid to a bigger problem, but it's nice to have that Band-Aid right now because really what it comes down to, I think, is matters of policy and how we then play out the budget for the whole year, but then also going forward because we can't view this as an, um, not an opportunity, we can't view this as a windfall by any stretch of imagination because we don't know when is that cliff going to hit us from the state. And this gives us, this is like bridge financing. It's, it's a gap to get us between where we are today and what we know to be inevitable from the state. So this is a great plan and an opportunity or at a time that seems to have been on our benefit at least.
I mean, I would have preferred, and I pushed as hard as I could with bond counsel at the end, what she says rules, I would have preferred using more in the current year and then having more available in the out years. Really, she insisted appropriately so that we need to respect the IRS rules and this is a, a plan and a program that she's endorsed and recommended to us. So that's, that's why we bring it to you.
I guess I think I look at it as, you know, to your point, Tom, where I look at the analogy I, I was thinking of the other day was it's an airplane. We can land before we can refuel and take off again. And the question is, is how quickly do we land? If we land too quickly, we crash. If we, this gives us a little bit more fuel and a little more, more time to do a safe, controlled landing, if you will, and, and keep it stable and predictable. This isn't the only mechanism we have. We have a couple of other mechanisms we'll, I'm sure we'll be discussing on how we get to that point, but the, I think the discussion really should be, I, I think we're all in agreement, it's not whether we get on the ground or not, it's, it's how long it takes us to get there. And I think maybe once we get there, then the discussion shifts more appropriately to how quickly do we want to take off again and how steep do we want that takeoff to be? But we got to land first.
And I think for the public, just to, so they understand, we sort of live this world of, of minimum receiver. That's what you're referring to when you talk about landing.
Correct.
It's becoming a minimum receiver from the state.
Correct.
And the only advantage of that is it removes volatility. I mean, the bad news is we get less, but at least we're, we know where we stand and we don't have these, well, there's never been climbs, it's always been steps down, we flatline.
And not to continue the analogy of landing because they actually do refuel in the air now.
Not commercial planes, Sean.
You know, no, but it's a good analogy because this doesn't necessarily require, this is a gap that doesn't necessarily require us to land because if we start planning now that we're going to be minimum receiver, this is the gap that allows us to start planning for today.
You know, I agree with everything that's been said. I think also it's an opportunity to continue the work, sort of this group going forward because we've had now, you know, the, the capital plan for the municipal side's come forward, there's going to be a capital plan. So it's, it's a real good time because there is going to be a cliff that, that once these monies run out, then there's going to be a much bigger share that needs to come from the tax base. So I think it'd be great to use this time also to really think about all of those things we have coming down the pike and do some strategic planning about, yeah, how we're going to plan for that landing, so it's a smooth landing. And so I think that involves, but I think it's going to take a lot of time and a lot of sort of, a group like this or a different group to really start coming together to do it. So I'd, I'd love to see that, after, once we get through the budget process, to really start thinking about what that is and how we have to restructure and what we need to do.
And those realities will affect, I suspect, a conversation around what sort of investments, how much and where can we make in education and on the town side. And it may have to be tempered a bit during the transition.
Right.
And then another conversation or at the same time, when we can really pick back up and make those further investments.
This leads into the greater importance around our fund balance policies. Because we're creating a million, this year, we're creating a million dollar surplus, so it's going to be dedicated to education, but then it talks, you know, then we have to take into consideration if we exceed the 3% that's maximum allowed by the state, what happens and how do we plan? Because the way I, personally, way, way I view this, we should never run out of the money because this is creating, at least until 2018, it's creating a surplus situation if we budget properly.
I think too, what it does is it begins to get us as, as the leaders of the town to be looking at more than just a one-year budget.
That's right.
Now having to look.
For years. What's coming.
This was, what, two years?
And I think it kind of builds on the conversation we've had about trying to find a way that we can get some stabilization to our, to our mill rate.
Right.
And what does that do and what's the timing and how do we put all these pieces together so we could, we could string that forward because I think that's going to be really important, so.
This is good news.
Okay.
Thank you.
So making recap, do we have any takeaways? Ruth is usually good at our takeaways. Do we have any takeaways today? Anyone have? Oh, yes, finish the glossary of terms.
So I have a take, two takeaways, I know. I'm okay with whatever terms you want to put in there. So if you want to put the entire.
You have some that you have to define, the rest is called.
Whatever you want to. So I have a couple of questions to ask as part of the takeaways. So first is, because it's kind of a low point, if you think about it, because now we're waiting until April 6th and which we didn't at least.
What you talking about?
I was going to say.
It's a low.
Yeah. There's no low.
No, no, no. In that respect.
It's a low for us, but not for these two gentlemen and their staff.
It's a low on a frenzy.
That's right. So April 6th, we get the budget. My bigger question is, and not to, for lack of better words, diminish the presentation I was giving, I am nowhere any closer to understanding what metrics do we select to be able to know whether or not the school department and the school's budget is what we need. So I would like to ask as part of the budget, and that, this can wait until whenever, the school department usually gives us, we have a one-on-one with the finance committee on the town's finance. If I could, if I, I'd like to see a recommendation on what that metric is or if it's a group of three, whatever it might be, and then why, and how this budget helps us understand that we're achieving something. Whether it's per pupil cost, whether it's one of the, you know, whichever one that you guys decide, I personally, I would just like that recommendation because I'm not any closer to knowing.
Well, I think, I think what, for me, what this presentation did was exactly that. It showed you, you can't just look at, okay, what's the per pupil spending? This is how we're going to measure our success. Or, okay, what's the results of testing? Okay, that's how we're going to measure. I think it showed that it's more in-depth and a little more complex than just sort of throwing out a soundbite.
And it's probably a two or three year lag, right? By the time we make the investments, it's the out years before you start to see the outcomes.
And he even said that, yeah.
And with the change in the testing over the last year and now this year, yeah.
We just threw out a whole year.
We just kind of, what are we going to compare that to? Because there is no subsequent year of testing for that matching test, so to speak.
I believe Sean is getting to, and I fully subscribe to this, as opposed to simply throwing money at it, saying we need to spend more per pupil, I think the argument, not the argument, what we're looking for is we need to be able to really demonstrate and talk about, these are the strategic investments, this is why, these are the metrics we're going to use to measure ourselves.
Well, we have a 24-month plan that people should take a look at because that pretty much identifies all of the metrics and where the investments are to be made. And, and I am pleased to report that, again, we're 12 months through it and we are making extraordinary progress. I, I mean, I don't know if people want to sit through a two-hour presentation of the planning that we've done over the course of the last several years where we have laid out very specific targets and very specifically tied those targets to our investments. And, and, and again, Duke, is there a direct correlation? I like that word because correlation is like one of the most purest connections. No, there's not. I mean, it's just, it's just very difficult to do that. But in terms of looking at what have we committed to doing, what have we done, we, you know, we can go through that, but I think that that, for the school organization, is, is great, but I think the entire town should do that, quite frankly. I, I mean, you know, I, I think that in terms of facilities planning, in terms of strategic planning, in terms of reporting out to the board, in terms of monitoring very closely what kind of progress we're making, in terms of looking at the investments that we've made, we've got it all. I mean, you know, hopefully the narrative change in our budget will, you know, Kate very dramatically shows, you know, the budget and, and the town budget and, and Tom and his team have done a great job of really laying things out. We have laid all of that same stuff out in separate planning documents and never really incorporated it because we're sort of restricted to this ugly format of numbers that nobody really wants to look at and, and scarily, few people know how to read. And so I think moving in that same direction, we're not, we're not creating that now, we're just taking from our documents in terms of the planning that has been ongoing since 2011 and really taking that verbiage and that narrative and putting it into the budget. So I think that that will help people better understand it. But I don't know necessarily that there is any lack of, you know, planning, any lack of monitoring of planning or, or any lack of looking at our investments or tying our investments to our targeted improvements and looking at the results of, of the efforts.
And I don't want to, by my question, I didn't want to come across, and I apologize if I did, that you haven't done that already. The question is, how do you synthesize all of that information into what is the most important metrics for the community to look at, at the very least for the town council to look at and say, this budget is achieving that goal?
Well, I think that, I think that narrative, I think that the narrative that we've now incorporated, Kate has done a great job of getting us all started, she and I are now the chief editors on that. I think that it, it will read as a story and there's, I mean, there's not just a few metrics, there's a bunch of metrics in there.
Great. So I guess, and I guess my question back is, are other departments or other town units also having to submit that?
So the finance committee on the town side has as its next item is to talk about what are the metrics that we want to measure municipal services at, whether it's a financial accounting metrics or meaning that you, you know, whether, not to get, whether it's current ratio, working capital, whatever it might be, we're going to have that conversation. But the other departments are not being asked, you know, so we're not asking public safety and, you know, public works versus public safety having their own metrics. The finance committee is, is looking at what are the metrics that we're going to kind of measure the other services at.
We're certainly not opposed to that. I think it's a fair, very fair point. The problem is it's a data, it's a data problem.
We don't have the, we don't have a comparison group that you guys have. There's no source of that.
So, so because there's available data versus not available data, one is being held to one standard and the other is being held to another?
No. Just, I mean, I'm just. Let's not get defensive here. So I'm going to be, let's not get defensive. What we're saying is that we have, we have a different measure to set that metrics to. You have a comparative group that is more fruitful and more informing than the group that we have. We're going to use our financial statements to determine what is the metrics that we want to measure the town. And by the way, as a department of the town, it would be inclusive of that metrics. So when we sit there and talk about working capital or debt to capital kind of ratio, then it would include the school department no differently than public safety or any other department. What I'm saying is that when you're asking for the amount of money that we ask for from the, and by the way, I'm now, I'm now feeling like I'm getting defensive, we're just certainly trying to explain the budget request that's being asked for, what is the, what is the best ratio? Is it per pupil? Is it?
Right. I, I think, again, maybe, maybe to just.
Saving.
This is my own, my own personal take is, yes, every department and every investment at this, in from, I mean, we're all one budget now, right? So we're not doing, I, I'd be very cautious to say that, that from my personal perspective as a finance chair, or a finance member, I'm not going to be evaluating the school's request for budget proposal with any different light than the, the public safety or, or public works in that I would expect whomever comes in front of the finance committee and requests resources and allocation will have a good justification for that. And the questions that will be asked, I'm hoping will be fairly uniform across the board of, why is this needed? What is the, you know, what, what are the purposes behind it? What can we expect for outcomes? And, and is this a short-term gain, a long-term gain? Does this, you know, the typical questions that we would ask for anything. I think the, the, the challenge here is, I, I know those metrics do exist, it's always projecting out to the rest of the community of, you know, what, what are we hoping to achieve? And to me, obviously, the purpose of education isn't spreadsheet management, it's not bond management, it's educating children. So let's look at where our performance factors are and let's look at what are some realistic and, some, some realistic expectations for those improvements. And then we can back out the investment in terms of amount and time. Likewise, on the municipal side, if we're looking at hiring more personnel for a particular department, the question is, what are we looking at improving? Is it response time? Is it efficiency? Is it coverage? What is it that's causing this request for investment? Then we have to sit down and evaluate, is that the priority that we have with limited resources? I mean, let's face it, if we had the cash to do all this stuff, it wouldn't, you know, it would be great. We could just say yes to everything, but we clearly don't. But we've got to have a, some, some tangible way of prioritizing the investments of the town. And this is a great process to help us understand from the council side, the methodology and the mindset that, that the school board is using to come up with those numbers. I think what we're just asking for is some way for us to be able to communicate that in the simplest terms with the fewest variables possible in a simple way so that when we all go out at budget time and say, this is the right budget, this is why. And then we can all have that common language out there and not have to get into the, you know, plethora of macroeconomics and micro and which, which part are we putting and why and that kind of stuff. But we do have to have a good narrative to take that out into the public and get support for the budget, I think.
Peter, I have two questions for that. That's only one.
I was entranced by, entranced by Chris's comments and I forgot the second question.
Yes, it worked. I just want to say on this.
Doesn't fall asleep, but.
Finally, on this point, for me, the reason that I think this conversation is important and the, in the spirit of the cooperation that I think this group has used last year and carried on and even stronger this year is that, you know, this sort of data today tells a really important message. I mean, it validates some of the things we've been doing. And I think that's only going to make this process more fruitful and perhaps easier in the future is if we can actually point and have data to support the sorts of things that you have been doing, that you want to do in the future. I think that's a pretty important part of.
I think the data has, I think the data has been there all along. It's basically been shared. I, I do agree with you that, you know, right now, we have a comparison group. It's essentially the same comparison group that we identified without all of this research, but now we have one that is research-based. So that's really great. So how do we compare to our comparison groups, our cohort? How do we, how have we spent? How has that impacted our ability to actually make the kind of moves that we want to move, move to now in terms of, I, I think that that, that's, that's right there. In terms of investments in education, how have, you know, how has Scarborough invested versus that comparative group versus that aspirational group? Again, all of that has been presented. Every year that I've been here, we've looked at that. In terms of the state contribution to education, Kate has, Kate has memorized what that chart looks like as the subsidy continues to fall and fall and fall and the impact locally. I do think that this is, this is good. I guess I'm a little bristly because we're talking about metrics and I thought we just confirmed what the metrics really are here. I don't know what, what else there would be other than getting into the very specifics of, we set out to implement a pilot on a brand-new performance evaluation system. Did you do it? Yes, we did. Boom, check. And you can go through the rest of the plan and, and do the same thing. I, I think that, you know, I'm into metrics as much as anyone else, but I don't know that there's anything simple that tells any different story than the metrics that we have used in, in, in presenting the budget. I, I do think that the move to doing a narrative budget and really pulling all of that out, I think, gives us an opportunity and, and darn that we didn't think about it sooner because it, while it's, while it would ordinarily be a lot of work, and it is in terms of formatting, there's nothing that we haven't had to be able to back up what we've been doing that we've created especially for this budget.
Perhaps sort of say, we, all of it's there, we just need to communicate it differently. Perhaps the budget documents.
I wholeheartedly agree.
I mean, I think, and for me, you know, what I thought about is, you know, we've heard a lot about being more transparent as a group. And it's sort of, I mean, in today's world, it's sort of the USA Today soundbites, but, but our goal was to try to pass the budget on the first time. So how, what are some things that we can communicate clearly to our, all the community about the things we're trying to achieve with, in that have some type of way we can measure what we say we're going to do? I think that was the intent of trying to find some metrics, whether it's how much debt, whatever we want to pick. I think it kind of builds on what we talked, either several simple things that's easy to communicate clearly to folks, that this is what we're trying to do, this is what we're going to be held accountable to, take the journey with us. And that's, that's where we're trying to get to. Because the problem becomes, I think you've had all those metrics, but boy, the dialogue last year, people sure got confused.
But the simple takeaway for me is that we put money in the classroom and we showed improvements in the, where we needed it the most.
Monique comes in presence, that to us almost annually.
Every, oh, yeah.
Exactly.
That's the challenge.
And I think that's why when he used the term bristly, is that what she used? I think, I think we're all sort of feeling that way in that we've been saying it for years and just, and now it just has been said by someone else and hopefully that penetrates through to.
Right. So the positive is, is getting that pull-through now that even though you've been saying it for years, now we have the opportunity to pull that message out and really, really get it out there collaboratively and collectively. And that's really the key. And, and I, I, maybe some of the concern would be that if you pick one or two of these things, that that's the only thing that's going to be the measurement tool. I don't necessarily, I don't see that, it's too complex of an issue, but it does need to be presented in as simple a form as possible, meaning that, I mean, ultimately, like I said, our goal is outcomes. It's, it's educational performance, right? So if we can't use the test data, what's the, what do you, what, what, what measurement or what metric can we use in the interim? That, that, I mean, ultimately, all of these investments are, are for one common goal and that's improvement in education. How do we measure that improvement? What do we look at? We don't need the, the PhD dissertation of all the factors that go into it, but we do need a good, to Peter's point, a couple of good soundbites that says, hey, you know, this investment, look at the history here, that's what this document is great. We've been doing this steadily. What's the, what's the, what's the reason for keeping it going? And, and why do we do this instead of something else? That's where the compelling argument needs to come. And, and that's why I think this is a great opportunity for us to collectively come up with that compelling argument to say, that, that investment, what little we can invest needs to go here and this is why, because of all of these things behind it. So yes, we've been, it's been said for years and years and years, it's a different scenario now, it's a different environment now. And I think we can capitalize on this, on this joint collaborative effort and put that foot together collectively together and say, we've worked on this, guys, the, you know, for the community. We've been working on this for months and months and months. We've all filtered through this stuff. Not everybody's going to like it, but it's a logical, realistic approach and there is a, a reasoning behind it. And I think that's what we've got to communicate. And, and I think that's what, maybe that's where the, the, the discussion should center around of, yeah, there's multiple other ones out there, but what are the, what are the real key messages we want to push forward with this budget? Both, not just from the school side, but from the municipal side too. Because if it comes down to it and we, we have very little to invest, but the fire department makes a compelling argument that if we don't have, you know, new employees, for whatever reason, our response times go down, we have to look at that and say, okay, maybe that's a higher priority right now than, than fully funding or fully giving the investments for education. That's the, we've got to have some logical way of determining that between, between all the departments. And I think this would be a huge help doing it this way.
I'd be curious to know what people thought was the most significant things that they took away from this. When Georgia and I had a good little discussion, as well as with the people as they were leaving, that our, our test performance on proficiency at the third and fifth and eighth grades is, is remarkable. I mean, there's obviously, and Georgia was saying that, that putting more educational emphasis in the high school would be a, and I didn't know that before I came here today. And that that, that, that sort of, did I, did I think we didn't spend too much? Yeah, from what I had looked at before for per pupil cost, I didn't. This told me we don't, we're not overly spending. We're a community that is actually, in some respects, I thought, underspending compared to cohort schools with towns with equal amounts of per capita income, assessed values. So that didn't come as a surprise, but the, the way the school, the scores dropped from eighth grade to 11th grade really surprised me. Two or three towns out of the whole 20 that were being compared, they maintained that consistency throughout. The other 15 all dropped significantly from eighth to 11th grade. And you said, why? What's going on? And so you had mentioned earlier that the ratio of per pupil to, to teacher at the high school is one of the reasons why, when you look at US News and World Report, ranks us lower because we're one to 15 and the other schools are all one to 12. So at some point, you start to say, well, and, and you said, you've been analyzing and have plans and, and the ability to, well, it would help the school, the town council to understand these things because they're in the unique position of having to make a judgment on the total amount of your budget without a hell of a lot of knowledge about the details of what you're planning. And, and we always say to each other, well, that's not our responsibility. How you spend your money is your responsibility. But how do you make a decision as to how much without having a good sense of all that went into it and where you're putting money to reinforce areas that need to be strengthened? So the more we can educate the town council on this, I think the better. Do we go through the kind of lengthy analyses and meetings you have? No. But, but there's got to be a process that gives them something of the executive summary of where we're going as a school system and as a town that, that allows them to be more informed than they are now.
I think you can accomplish that two ways. You can accomplish that with, you know, in the budget narrative, or we can accomplish that in the finance committees when you sit down with the budget and we start asking questions. I, I think it's more productive to, to maybe do a combination of the two, but I'm hoping this, that's what this form.
I agree with you.
This form gives us a little.
The, the, the front of our efforts to understand it is our finance committee, the two finance committees working together to understand it. And then that information can get disseminated from the town finance committee members to the rest of the town council. And I think to be ultimately successful, we need to disseminate it to the, to the populace. And that's the piece where I think we struggle. So if there's a way we can boil this down to a couple of those, two or three soundbites or takeaways, we now have a statistically valid, you know, document prepared by academic professionals. I don't think anyone can question the veracity of the data and what it is. We now need to tell a story in, in kind of bite-sized pieces, understandable pieces.
Yes.
Moving on.
Part of this question, Bob, it just kind of dovetailing on Sean. At some point, we have a scheduled time to kind of, how do we, we need to work on a communication plan at some point, so just as a future agenda item, we should park that about what is the story we're going to tell? That's.
Well, I think we need a budget first, so.
Well, I know, I know. It's, it's happening fast, but I'm thinking this group needs to then, once we get closer.
Right.
But I think we need to start thinking about how we spin that story, what is the story we want to tell so we can go to the public to give them.
Every week. Yep. I made a note, we'll include that somehow as a future topic.
Yep. Public input? Adjournment, so I have a motion to adjourn.
It's moved.
Second? Leader? All a favor? Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
If I can get my story.